All right, I'm gonna open this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board for Tuesday, December 31st, 2019. And before we begin, let's rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It might just be worth mentioning, Tony, for the public that this meeting is a reschedule from last night due to poor weather conditions.
Yeah.
And the need to address the end of the year matters.
Want me to say it again?
I did.
Okay.
You can.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna get that out there for all the folks at home.
Thank you for juggling your time off. The year-end stuff is important, so.
Yes. All right, first up, let's get our manifests out of the way.
I'll make a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifest of December 30th, 2019, and the payroll manifest of December 31st, 2019.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? unanimous. And we're gonna postpone minutes until our next meeting. Thank you. Oop, can I borrow your pen?
Sure. Tyler, I just asked that. Tyler is.
There you go, thanks. Here you go. See if I've got a fine pen. That's here. Action items from last meeting, I don't honestly recall what they were, but I know we had these encumbrances to deal with, so.
Why is this so dark in here?
Say again?
Why is this so dark in here?
I don't know, couldn't tell you.
Has nothing to do with glasses you're wearing, Steve?
See, that's why she's so smart. You made it. You had her on a shirt, paid you a trip, and I had her swear.
We can start now, Steve's here.
Yeah. All right, reports from boards and committees, budget? Anything going on with budget?
Yeah, they talked more about having an audit as to why they had so much money left over. They talked more about the addition, classroom size.
That's a school?
The school.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they mentioned something about that grant that they came to us for 90 grand is actually 110.
Oh, the grant that they have the potential to get?
Yeah.
That they mentioned to us?
Oh, yes.
It's actually 110?
Yeah.
Grant from who?
It escapes my mind right now, Steve. But I can get that for you.
It's probably in the minutes from the.
It is in the minutes.
It's in the minutes from the meeting where the school board was here. Ben, when you say they're doing an audit, who's doing that audit?
I didn't catch the name of it, but I'm.
Is it just the school board themselves or an external?
I wanna say it was the school board, but I'll get an answer.
No, that's okay, just curious.
Grant somewhere from the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
DOE or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. All right, planning board?
That's Tyler.
That's Tyler, right, CIP?
We were supposed to meet last night before our BOs meeting, and because of the weather, that meeting didn't happen either, and we need to reschedule.
Okay. And 300th? That's Tyler too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and anything on Marston? No? It's all covered in snow now.
It is all covered in snow, and, you know, we've got some fundraising activities that we wanna focus on over the winter, but we need to get past the holidays.
Yeah, yeah. Are there still medallions left over?
Yes.
Yes?
Think so, yeah.
A few or a fair amount?
No, I think we're down to a few.
Down to a few?
Yeah.
Okay, get them while they last, they're going, they're hot.
They can make more, but, yeah.
Okay. All right, town administrator report?
Uh, let's see, since we last met, our two cadets graduated from the police academy. Landon McBride and Chris Alvarez are back in town and on the job, riding along with our other senior officers. They both had some time in the field before they went to the academy, so they'll be out on their own pretty soon, but both came through the academy in one piece. Let's see, a couple things going on in the recycling center. First, we just had a, just had our, the vendors are cracking down on what they're putting up with. You've seen in the recycling market broadly that contamination of the recyclable materials is getting in the way of selling the materials. We just had a load of paper rejected because it was too wet. Our paper dumpster is outside, and we've always gotten away with it, but the vendor, that paper vendor sent it back, said we don't want it. We've known that was gonna come, just because everything else is getting harder and harder to move material-wise. You'll see in the stuff we're talking about with encumbrances, we found a cover we can buy for that one dumpster to keep that from happening in the future, but it turns into all kinds of chaos because the, you have to basically landfill it when that happens, there's no market for it. Once it's, once it's done, it's done, so.
And we have to pay for that expense.
We do, it's a, you know, we're paying to get rid of paper now, we're not, we're not even selling it, it's being recycled, but there's not a market to sell it, it's just a market to get rid of it for less than you pay to landfill it. So we pay a small amount to dispose of paper, where three years ago, we used to sell the paper, and that's, that's happening, you know, recycling generally, it's getting harder and harder, but, so we'll pay, we'll pay an incremental amount to get rid of it instead of.
As we look forward, is this gonna start increasing that operating budget for that recycling center?
The first place you'll see, that we already see it is in declining revenue. Now, that used to be kind of hidden in the budget where we would, the revenue would, but revenues are down, and paper is now, instead of being a revenue source, is just a different expense. So, yes, that's gonna keep happening. The second thing is the plastics vendors are reducing the breadth of plastic that we're taking. We go pretty far in our, compared to what a lot of other places do in sorting, you know, you're sorting different numbers of plastics. Now, the non-bottle plastics, like salad containers and stuff, they're starting to be less interested in that market as well, so we're having to, we're trying to keep some of that stuff out of the, out of the plastics recycling and keep it just on the bottles. I don't remember the numbers, I'm sorry, I never learned those numbers, but.
Number three, number two, number one?
Yeah, there's, the bottles are still good, but the other plastics are, they're getting tighter and tighter on what they'll accept in those loads. We had a, as you may recall, we stockpile plastics to try and get full loads, to keep the shipping costs down, and try and play in that market as a big player. So we're only selling plastics a couple times a year. We had to, we had to, NRRA had to work pretty hard to find us a buyer for our last truckload of plastic. We did, we did find a buyer, and it's gone, but that's gonna be a headache for residents as well as for the staff to kind of, anytime you change what you're doing, you gotta relearn everything, it's, it's hard for the customer, so.
So are we changing vendors every time you have a full load?
Yeah, we, NRRA shops our materials for us, but with something like plastics, which we ship maybe twice a year, sometimes three times a year, they will, they shop it for us, we don't, we don't have to juggle all that, but they go out and find buyers for that stuff. Some of the other materials, like the metals, are always going to the same place, so it's different with different materials. Cardboard gets shopped, I think it usually ends up going to the same place, but they do a little bit of shopping on that.
Is cardboard like paper, we pay to get rid of that too?
No, we're still getting some money for cardboard, not a lot. We do a good job. Cardboard, I think our cardboard's pretty pure and clean, we're touching it. You know, residents do a very good job of breaking it down, sorting it and all that stuff, and then our people, we have to touch every piece of cardboard as we bail it, so our loans are pretty good, we still have a, we're still able to get something for that, so.
Is it possible, Chris, to put in an explanation of all of this, like on the website?
Yep. Yeah, as soon as we get some real clear guidance on those plastics, we'll do that, and we'll put something there.
Yeah, 'cause then we can share that around.
Yep.
When you say clarification, Don, are you referring to like the cost as opposed to, you know, now we have to pay to get rid of some of the stuff as opposed to just being paid?
Well, yeah, I'm talking about like the impact to residents?
Yeah.
You know, and what's driving those changes?
Okay. No, 'cause I think it would be helpful if they, if the folks out there understood that it's no longer town being paid for it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, that should be in there too.
Yeah, we're just doing our year-end tracking of all the various materials, I was talking with Brian yesterday, we're gonna cook up some signs that say, that we'll put on the various materials that say, "We saved X this year in recycling this," you know, we'll do that math and say, "It's still worth the effort."
Okay.
As with most of those materials, the real benefit is not paying to landfill it, you know, instead of paying 78 bucks a ton to landfill it, you get rid of it for virtually nothing or whatever. We don't do it to sell it, we do it to not landfill it.
No, I get that.
Well, that's important for people to know too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but the economics of recycling are broken, and we, you know, everybody's suffering through that. We have not felt the pain of a lot of other communities because we have been doing so much sorting all along. Places that are doing single stream are getting out, are going back to doing sorting. I live in Durham, we just, this year, we used to do single stream, and now we've gone back to the old way of two-stream, and you can imagine the, you know.
Yeah.
The chaos that that can.
Well, that being said, I think it, you know, we should really thank our recycling folks over there for doing such a outstanding, and the community itself for doing their part to make it easier as opposed to just throwing it away.
Yep. Let's see, we, the town clerk has received and certified a petition for what's commonly known as SB 2, the, what's the formal name for it, official ballot referendum that would change how we, how we do town meeting. You know, we go to the deliberative session like the school district does and vote for all the appropriations on the ballot instead of the Saturday town meeting. I don't know what you wanna do, and I don't know what kind of public conversation is gonna arise from that, I wasn't here the last time that went on the ballot, it was, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, but you might think about how you wanna discuss that, if the public wants to have a conversation about it, what you need to frame that. It's a pretty big change in how we do business. You will, you'll have a public hearing here as a, as part of that, as you head into town meeting, but if you wanna do anything more than that, or publish anything or anything like that, you might wanna think about that, we've got.
I think it'd be good to at least put something up, you know, pros and cons of how we do things now versus SB 2.
Yeah, we, I mean, you know, we're gonna be neutral in the, well, in the presentation of it, but I've asked NHMA for, they've got a report that they did on a few years ago. I'm still looking for other, you know, neutral information, but if you wanna do something off, out of routine, or you wanna dedicate some time to a meeting or whatever, we can do that, but we only have four or five meetings left before town meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think personally that the people who are putting the petition forward should be the ones making the case for it.
Yeah, like any other petition, they gotta.
Yeah, exactly.
They've gotta market that position to the voters, you know.
All right, and then lastly.
Just to be clear, we are obligated to hold a public hearing on it.
The, well, it's not financial, so I don't think you're obligated to, no. I think you would and do, you know, and you'd be talking about it as you, as you go through the warrant, but you're not obligated to have a, you know, formally noticed public hearing.
Well, I thought we were because we're, just like with going to five selectmen, we're changing the structure of town government, so that required a hearing.
I don't, I'll look at, I'll see what the requirements are, I don't, I don't know if it's required, and you would do it in the course of a regular meeting and all that kind of.
Right, right, right.
It's also not something that we would recommend or not recommend because it has no financial impact, right?
Right, there will be nothing from you or the budget committee on the ballot in terms of recommendation.
Yeah.
You can speak as you, you know, you can do anything you want if you wanna make a recommendation, but it wouldn't appear on the ballot.
How many signatures did they get?
Well, you only need 25, and they had at least enough, I didn't.
I think it was 30, wasn't it? 30, 35?
I don't know. It wants, it's, the town clerk certifies that it's, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just curious.
Yep. And lastly, we don't have to discuss this today, but we are running out of time to talk about the town report, if you wanna dedicate it or mention anybody in particular, we typically do that. Kelly gave you a list of our prior.
Yeah, the only thing they'll say on that is 2018 is incorrect as it's listed here.
Are we allowed to talk open about it?
Yes, we've, we've done this kinda quietly in the past, but.
Didn't we just have recently, the old Boston Post, is that what it's called? Kane?
Kane, Boston Kane Post, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Whispering it on public TV doesn't change how.
Sorry.
I mean, it's awkward to talk about it, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, but I just, I throw that in front of you, if you wanna talk to me offline individually, and, you know, we can work with it, but we are running out of time.
So let me suggest that everybody sends Chris an email that kind of recommends.
Yeah.
Proposes, yeah.
Okay, and that's all I have for the town administrator's report.
All right, on to general business and 2019 budget encumbrances, which, back to you, Chris.
Okay, so we are on the last day of the year, and we are still scrambling to get some final things, but we're, we're in good shape. We're gonna finish the year with a operating surplus somewhere between 200,000 and 300,000, depending on what you do with these and a couple other variables, you know, this storm and a few other things, you know, we'll see what comes of that, but plenty of room to do year-end work. I don't think we have any surprises here for you other than that one recycling item that I just mentioned, that's all, that came together this morning. By way of reminder, encumbrances allow you to use 2019 appropriations and 2019, money that you were appropriated and have the authority to spend in 2019, after the end of the year, usually that money reverts right to the fund balance. Anything that you have a, we have a contract on and encumber that cost, we can use 2019 So we have a handful of things to recommend here. The biggest ones are road project related, we have ledge farm work going on, South Summer in Canton. What we did with, we have top coat asphalt to do on the work we did this year, we did the base coat before the frost, get through a freeze thaw cycle, and then put the top coat on and do the detail work. Some of that we're already contracted for, we're gonna have to spend it, some of the, some of the funds around warrant articles for a capital project, a warrant article for a capital project, that money doesn't need to be encumbered, it's, it's there, this is really operating budget funds. So we're, we're juggling a couple different pools of money. The objective here is to take what we can out of the 2020 budget, do things that we might not otherwise have an easy path to do. Now, those are the two big objectives. So we have road projects for work that's underway now, roads that we've already started. Heating systems, we can talk in more detail, but we've been talking about this building as well as the highway garage waste oil furnace. We'd like to pull the trigger on both of those systems now, and then a few smaller things that are underway, the gravel pit survey, we've talked about a number of times, we're ready to go on that, and the Kelsey Road bridge engineering to get ready for a grant to replace that. So.
So this number up here says 200, but it's more, because this is so large, it's more close to the 300, correct?
Yeah, if you, if you do these encumbrances, we're gonna finish in the neighborhood of 200,000, that's.
Oh, would be the surplus.
Yeah, because, because of that warrant article exclusion and, you know, if you look at the, if you look at the budget report today, we've got a $400,000 surplus, but we've got, we've got bills out that we know are coming, we've got stuff we're contracted for, so.
But we will still have between two and three, even with all of this?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna finish in the neighborhood of two with these encumbrances.
Okay.
That will, that, so that 200 will revert to the fund balance. You might find that you're in a position, come town meeting, to use some fund balance. You know, we've got an operating budget increase, you might wanna have a conversation about asking town meeting to use fund balance for some of next year's expenses, that's, we don't have to decide that now, but that's a, you know, we've got, we've got some added revenues this year plus the operating budget surplus, so we're gonna, we're gonna be in good shape to close the year. The other things that, if we do these encumbrances, it also opens up a few other things, it covers some future CIP costs, the gravel pit survey and the Kelsey Road bridge. The Kelsey Road thing we're gonna have to do, it's just a question of when and how you wanna pay for it. The, we have a capital reserve fund for town facilities, it's labeled the HVAC emergency fund or something to that effect. That was started in 2014, 15, we've been putting money away, 5,000, 10,000 a year in anticipation of needing to replace the boiler in this building, that was the, that was the genesis of that fund. That is at your disposal, you can, you, the board, have the authority to spend that, it's got 37,000 in it right now. We could use that to do the boiler in this building if you wanted to, or we can use unused 2019 funds. If you leave it in there, it's there for the next emergency. The next thing on our radar is the lift at the library, we've, we haven't budgeted a replacement, it's at the end of its scheduled life, but we're trying to stretch it out. Last year we.
Does that qualify, sorry?
Yes, it does.
Does it qualify for that?
It doesn't have to be HVAC, it's, the way the, that reserve fund is structured, it's for town facilities, for repairs to town facilities, so.
How much is one of those things cost?
The lift? Between 15 and 20, I think? I think that's where we left off, it's closer to 15 than 20, I think, last time I looked, but.
What is the proposal for the boiler?
The boiler, no, the boiler in this building, the one we're looking at right now is 39.
Can we split the fund?
Yeah, you can use a part of it, you can.
I mean, the money's there to do it, if we're gonna do the boiler, we're setting aside money for that project, I mean.
It's, it was, it was, that was the, I understand, I think it started before I got here, but it, the, the thinking when they started, I think, was we're gonna need to do this, but who knows what's gonna come up emergency-wise, you know, if you have another facility emergency.
Yeah.
You, if, if you have to pick one, you're gonna have to find the money in the operating budget that, you know, when it happens.
So why don't we leave the boiler thing for the boiler and just use end-of-year funds for the lift?
That's what I'd suggest, just to give you the flexibility.
That's a.
But we wouldn't have time to put a contract in place for the lift?
No, we don't, we don't need to do the lift, the lift is, it's working.
Okay, how old is it?
It's as old as the library expansion, so it's 20, I think.
Yeah, so it's reaching the end of its life.
It is.
And I think it's something to, you know.
Yeah, but.
I don't wanna be in a situation where someone gets stuck on it, a handicap person or whatever, you know.
Right, yeah, when it goes, when it go, the hard part we've had with it is finding the parts now, it's, they've been band-aiding it with occasional minor problems.
Why don't we just be proactive and make us, you know.
Why don't we just use the 39 out of the 2019 budget to cover the heating system, which.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but then at end-of-year funds out of the 200 to ask the unspent.
So you're saying take that down more, you're saying add the 15 for the lift to this list?
I would.
But.
I don't think we need to, we don't need to replace the lift until it dies, we could get a few more years out of it, it's, you know, and it'll, it'll be a manageable process when it comes.
Yeah.
We're not.
Well, can we, what's in the, the CIP we have set aside for the thing and still just put the $5,000 away like we were for, and go back to like we're doing? Of the, you know, save the 5,000 in the CIP again for future problems, like when we did in order to get to the 40, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, you could, you could zero out the, the reserve fund and then start building it up again, that's another, that's an option too.
That would be, I mean, that's what, we put the money to do it, to budget like that, so since we don't, I mean, we're, we're hypothetically saying that things are gonna just die, but we don't know, again, like you said, it could go three years. So in three years, we'd have the $15,000 if it lasts three years, but even if it lasts two years, at least we'd have 10 to play with, and we'd have just to grab five somewhere else, it's a more manageable number.
So given that, John, are you saying don't encumber the funds for the heat system, but use what's in the capital reserve fund for the heat system? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we put the money aside for. I mean, the purpose of leaving it in there is using the, the taxpayers' money has been used to pay for this.
Yeah, you're gonna have the same amount in the bank one way or the other, it's just a question of where you.
Is it the capital reserve or in the general fund?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, there's not gonna be any tax implication for it one way or the other.
I'm just saying, we, since we've planned on budgeting, and this is what we did, in order to save this amount of money for this day to come, we should be spending that money because that's what we were planning to do with it in the, in the original.
What else?
Just keep money there to save for another, I mean, we could rebuild it up, but I think we should just.
You would, if you left it in there, if you left the funds in the reserve fund, you would presumably not add to it anymore at town meeting, so that you would.
Correct.
You know, we, we put 10,000 in last year, that warrant article would go away in 2020 because you wouldn't need it, so there's a.
What would be, so if we said, okay, we've got the heating system, we've got the elevator, what else do you think is at risk that we might need that fund for at some point?
Uh, it's gonna be some oddball thing, the waste oil furnace at the recycling center.
But this could be used for any town.
Something in the old town hall, we think we're gonna be okay there, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we have anything else on the radar as obvious candidates, but, you know, with the roof caved in on the highway garage 10 years ago, those things, things happen, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's an emergency fund, it's, you can't always anticipate those.
Can we take money out of that capital reserve fund without town meeting approval?
Yes, you are, you are the agent of the fund, yeah.
Yeah, authorized, okay.
That is more flexible than operating, you know, than general fund money, that's the benefit of it, you can get at it.
Town meeting has to take money out of the general fund?
Right.
Approved, taking money. Town meeting has to take money out of the general fund, approve, taking money out of the general fund.
Right, so if you have a, if you have an emergency on April 1st, you've got to wait 11 months to get funds for something, or pull it in.
Another way to look at it, too, is right now, since we have that money left over in the budget, we could just spend it and keep the other one the way it is, and just stop putting money into it.
That's what I think.
Right, that's what I'm suggesting you do, stop putting money in.
That's the strategic advantage of having these unexpended funds available to us now, because we have the opportunity to preserve that reserve fund for those uncertain risks that are, that we know are coming, like the lift, or a caved-in roof, or a, you know, waste, what have you.
And it doesn't, in effect, reduce the overall budget thereby reducing the taxes, right?
Right, yes, if you stop asking for an appropriation to that fund, that is a tax savings in 2020.
Well, plus the fact that we would be removing about 42,000 from the 2020 operating budget.
Yeah, those are separate things, but yes, that's another thing we're doing with these encumbrances, is reducing the.
Yeah, the 2020 budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So let's do that. We need the furnace.
Seriously, I'm sitting here cold.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that goes without saying, yeah, it's cold in here.
Let's just get that done and taken care of, use the money, do the way we're going, what you just said, and keep that money in there, we don't, we can take off that article so we don't have to see it at the, and that saves the town money, or the people money because it's not a $10,000 expense.
Right.
And you agree?
I thought that's what I was saying, but.
As long as y'all get there at the end, it's okay, yeah.
So Chris, these, so that is the proposal, I think that.
Yes, you've, you've got some detail on the, on the heating system proposals, one for this building and one for the highway garage. Dale, our building inspector, has been helping me with the technical side of this.
Are we doing both of those?
Uh, that's what I'm suggesting, yes. We have the, the one for this building, we've, we've been limping along, it's working today.
Still leaking, though?
Uh, yes, but less so today. What we're looking at for this building, this has a, and my technical knowledge is a little limited, but this has a single humongous 1960s or 70s vintage boiler, and mostly forced hot air in the building. What we're going to do is replace that with two smaller oil burners, high-efficiency burners. The, the one for two does a couple things, it allows you to run one when you don't need full power, you don't need the full load, so it's more efficient. These are newer, so they're more efficient. And it also stretches the life of them both out, it will go back and forth between them, it's all controlled in a way that, you know, stretches the life of both of them out, gives you the redundancy that if one of them, for some reason, goes down, you've still got the ability to keep the pipes from freezing and.
So does it have things in place where if there was ever to come a time when we were to expand on this, that we don't have to add another boiler?
Uh, these are probably a little bit, this, this package is probably a little bit bigger than it absolutely has to be, not a lot. If we, if we were to expand this building somehow, it's probably going to require a pretty comprehensive electrical plumbing and, and heating. You know, we've got, we've got, we've got electrical issues in here that will complicate any change in use, but I suspect, if you just hypothetically wanted to add on to a big section to this building somehow, or replace the back building or whatever, that's probably a separate.
That's a bigger issue.
It's, yes, but just, just pulling stuff out, that's probably a separate heat unit to do that. I think these will not be big enough to add several thousand square feet to this building.
And these are not, like, separate zones?
No, they both work the same, they both feed the same, yep, lead-lag, one will go first and the other one will get going when it needs it.
Okay.
This would be wired to the, it'd be controlled with the outside air temperature in mind, so if it's, you know, if it's 45 degrees and you need heat, or if it's 12 degrees, you get a different response from the system, so it's, it's more efficient that way, too.
And can those roles be reversed, the, the lead one and the?
Yeah, it automatically takes turns.
Okay, all right, because that reduces wear and tear.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And it says the outdoor reset unit actually increases the efficiency to 89% as opposed to 87%.
Yeah, that's that change, change in response based on the outdoor air temperature. Right now, the thing, if the thermostat says it's below X, if any one zone in here says it's below the set temperature in this room, the whole boil, the whole boiler fires up and runs the big humongous thing to, to get air, you know, warm air to that zone. We're not going to change the zones in here, we're still going to have the same zones and the same challenges with those, where the thermostat for this room is in the recreation office, so if it's warm in the recreation office, then this is no heat in here. That, we're not solving that problem, we're, we're just working on the source of the heat. But being able to fire much less at any given time, if you don't need the whole system to run, you just need a, you know, a portion of it, that's one of the benefits of this.
Okay.
So that's this building, the waste oil furnace at the highway garage, we want to switch to propane. That system has been giving us fits for years, we have multiple down days every winter, and we've spent somewhere in the last five years, I went back, five out of the last six years, we spent between 2 and $4,000 maintaining that waste oil furnace, trying to get it back in service. Waste oil furnaces are finicky, dirty, challenging pieces of equipment, and we just, we have so many down days and we spend so much money on the thing, a propane system will be, will actually keep the place warm consistently. We probably will find a market for the one we have, we, we think we'll, we don't know what, but somebody will probably buy it. We'll pick up some floor space, the, the unit will be off the ground, and so we'll add a little bit of capacity to the garage, and hopefully never have to think about the thing again. That's, that is in the draft of the 2020 budget right now, that system, it's been in the CIP, it's, it was in, you know, we slotted it for next year's budget. We threw a, a number of 20,000 in the budget, we're not going to need to spend that much, we're going to need to spend more, like, 10, so that 20 will come out of the operating budget for 2020.
How long will that project get done? Now?
Yeah, it's, it's, this one's going to be first, this one's, you know, this one could die at any point, and then the highway garage will be, it, that we can do in mid-season, it's okay, we'll, we'll do it this, you know, this winter and all like that.
Same company?
Different.
Different. So I, I assume like the vendors that you're showing us here, that you talked with others and which are putting forward.
We've got, we've got, yeah, these are the two that we're going to go with, we got, we got proposals from both of them for both systems.
Yep.
We still have a little bit of refining to do with this, I'm hoping to do it today with Dale.
Yep.
The chimney in this building, we, is one open question, we're not sure what we're going to need to do to that, we'll find the money to do that, but that's a smaller piece. We'll fi, we'll figure that out.
It's going to show its age.
Uh, what else, what else you want to hear about? The radio repeaters we talked about, that works underway, that's getting the thing out of Johnny's barn and putting it up at the square. The recycling covers, that problem just came to light today.
So when, when you, when you say the repeater, is this going to be a big antenna in the middle of the?
No, it'll just be, it's a little thing on a power pole, it's there already. You won't even notice it.
All right.
Yeah.
Looks a lot bigger at Johnny's house. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just don't want to take away from the, the scene.
No, no, it's actually, it's, the, the thing itself, well, we say it's on the square, it's actually on Deerfield Road, down a couple of poles, I think, up at the crest of the hill there, so it's not.
So it's on the High Point?
Yeah, it's, the, the, the monument isn't holding an antenna.
So it's more, it's going to be more by Farnol's Farm.
Yeah, it's, I think, I think it's actually, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, we're not putting a new power meter out in the square or anything like that, yeah. So we do all this stuff, yeah, we leave that, that capital reserve fund there for you. We still have 11,000 in SB 38 highway money from a couple of years ago, we're keeping that powder dry for you. We had, we had that special one-time appropriation from the legislature this year of 40,000 and 42,000, we have another one next year. That was at your disposal for this year, you're not going to use it, it'll just fall to the fund balance, and that's another, basically another revenue addition for this year, and there'll be another one for next year, so. Next time you see the budget, you'll see some added revenues, you know, we have that full year of the cell tower lease, so there's a little bit more money coming in outside of property taxes to ease that operating budget bite that we're, we're trying to minimize, That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Okay, any questions for Chris?
I'll make the motion if you guys are ready.
Go for it.
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion that the select board hereby encumbers 2019 appropriated funds for the following: road maintenance and reconstruction, 282, 411, 282,411; Kelsey Road Bridge Engineering, $10,000; community center heating system, $39,700; Highway Garage Heating System, $9,900; recycling dumpster covers for $1,000; and the Highway Radio Repeater for $3,000.
One question, this, the highway garage heating system at 9,900, the quote that we're looking at here was from 11/6/2018.
Yeah, we're, the, we're still good with that.
We're still good?
Yeah, we've talked with the vendor.
It's a 30-day expiration, so I don't know where.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get an updated one signed when we need to, but we're still good with that.
That's still a good number.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been on our radar for a while, obviously, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that it's still be an accurate number.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll have a little bit of cost around citing the tank, you know, we're about to put up a bollard in front of the tank where we're going to put, this is smaller money around it, but we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, so you second Donna's motion?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Go get that heat.
Wear a sweater.
What's that?
Wear a sweater.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I am.
All right, that is the end of general business, any, anything for non-public that?
No.
No?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, yeah, like, motion and a second, all in favor?
Hey.
All right.
Back to the chamber.
All right, meeting is, meeting is adjourned, thanks again for happy new year, everyone.